In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Sorry for the late start. We'll make it up, I promise. We'll start it out with a public comment. Anyone here for public comment? Nope? Okay. We'll go to the next agenda item, number five, to designate certain parks, recs, police matrons, crossing guards, COA van driver positions as special municipal employees. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, this is an agenda item that comes to us by virtue of conversations with the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as with our understanding of some needs in the police and council on aging, police department and council on aging. And the board tonight is being asked to designate positions in the Parks and Recreation Department, largely or entirely part-time positions that are specific in nature, as well as a police matron and crossing guard positions, the council on aging van driver, which is shared by two part-time employees, as special municipal employees. And the reason for this is because we found that despite our advertising of the positions, our continuous advertising of the positions, in some cases, we've had difficulty recruiting employees for the position. And we have found that on multiple, on occasion, the candidates that come to us are already employed in other part-time capacities, working for the town. Under state law, municipal employee cannot hold two part-time positions without one of those positions being designated as a special municipal employee. And therefore, we've come forward here with a recommendation that the board vote to designate the Parks and Recreation Infant Toddler Instructor, After School Instructor and Coach, Summer Program Instructor and Coach, Summer Program Director, Summer Program Assistant Director, and Summer Counselor Position, as well as the Police Matron and Crossing Guard, and Council on Aging Van Driver Positions as special municipal employees. And we included in the packet this listing, as well as a motion and information around the Conflict of Interest Law, as well as an opinion from Town Council. The reason it's come up is because there's a seasonal, I shouldn't say seasonal, there is a hire that's pending right now relative to a candidate for Infant and Toddler Instructor, which as I understand is a vacancy made, vacancy caused by the appointment of the former person to a full-time position in the Parks and Recreation Department. And then the Parks and Recreation Department would like to hire a candidate who is otherwise employed by the town in a part-time capacity in another department, but cannot do so legally without the position pending being designated as a special municipal employee.
Any board members have any questions? Mr. O'Leary.
It's not so much a question, because I understand how the statute works. It's just more of a concern, because in my understanding is, you know, it's the position that's designated, not the individual. Generally, in the past, we've been very cautious to designate positions as special employees. So in doing so, I would, if we're going to act favorably on this recommendation proposal, is that the board revisit any designated positions on an annual basis. You know, maybe we should do it, I don't care if we do it in June or we do it in December, just to keep it in the forefront. And again, it's more of an administrative matter whereby, you know, it gets into our tickle file that, you know, whether it be with reappointments or an annual timeframe, we look at it whether it be on a fiscal standpoint, fiscal year, or during our regular budgetary session, you know, timeframe with regular appointments in December, that whatever positions we have designated be either reaffirmed or reevaluated annually. And again, maybe we need a policy change also from the board's standpoint, but I think administratively it can be handled. And if we have the need now, then that's fine. But I think it's important that we keep it in the forefront, keep it very visible, so that we don't fall into some sort of trap later on, shall we say, with specific positions being so designated. Again, it's not for the individual, it's for the position itself. So I think it's something that if we're going to do it, and again, we haven't, very often we haven't done it in the past, I think we need to visit it every year.
Mr. Minipelli.
And just to add to that, too, four of these are for summer, for summer program positions, so there certainly isn't a need to do that right now, because the summer's over and school's in session. And I think there needs to be some more parameters around it. For example, if it's the Council on Aging Van Driver, so that there's a specific daytime, obviously, or I guess hours within which that van driver is designated to work, so what other position would that van driver be filling that we've given them designated status as a special employee? Or is it someone else that's currently employed that's going to be serving as a van driver? Is that how it's going to work?
So I guess I would defer the Recreation Director relative to the summer positions.
Yeah, so I don't necessarily need them approved tonight, but if I had to wait till April, just say, when you met again, I start my hiring in January for the summer. I start interviewing, I start advertising in January, because I obviously have to have summer directors and summer staff hired, trained, first aid CPR training, by March I have it done, so that I'm fully set up to advertise and run the program. So I can't wait till the summer, I'd be in a lot of trouble if I wait till the summer. I hire a lot of teachers in the summer, it makes sense, they're out in the summer, they're qualified. I hire coaches that are coaches for the schools, they're qualified, they're ready to work. So, I mean, to me, if you had to review them each year, December would be fantastic, because that would give me plenty of time to do my summer hiring. If we waited till the summer, I would be really stuck between a rock and a hard place trying to find people after they've got approved, you know, say in June or in April Town Meeting or whatever.
I think I'd be more comfortable doing it during the budget cycle myself, to be honest with you. You've got to come here before us to present, you should include this in your budget, and at that time, we should have a note to make sure that as we go and approve the budgets, we specifically have a motion every year around the budget season that approves these positions. We shouldn't approve the money if we're not going to do the position. And I think we should take that action first, then approve the money associated with it. Mr. O'Leary.
Just in relation to the budget, I know we start budgeting reviews as soon as the money's starting to be spent, but, you know, my guess is, we should probably do it with December, we do annual appointments or reappointments, because sometimes we may not hear the recreation budget until February, April, or March, excuse me, before the April Town Meeting. So my suggestion would be, do it with the regular appointments and reappointments in December, timeframe as far as those positions. And then, from budgetary standpoint, we're going to get the justification anyway as far as what the cost associated with the part-time position is. My guess is, it's not going to be significantly different whether they're special employee status or not. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, again, I'm just more concerned with the positions being designated as special employees, which gives that position a little extra consideration for dual employment than I am the dollar amount, because I think the dollar amount for the positions are the same regardless of whether they're...
They wouldn't change at all.
They wouldn't change much whether they're in-house or out-house.
Yep.
So my guess is, if we do it on an annual basis with our regular appointments and reappointments to boards committees and commissions, it'll probably be most appropriate.
I'm comfortable with that. I think that's a reasonable suggestion. Yes.
And specifically, I think the Town Minister had to mention that I do have a person right now that I'm waiting to hire, that is, a part-time substitute in the schools that I also want to hire as an instructor for me seasonally, hopefully to work throughout the school year, this whole year, but I take one season at a time, we'll see how it lasts. But I would like to really offer a position over the next week, so it is something that I have on the board right now that I need approval for. Again, she just holds part-time substitute teacher through the school system, and this is a part-time seasonal position with me.
Mr. Minipelli.
Which...
That's the Infant Toddler Instructor.
And so actually, too, then, these other summer, that you're going to actually advertise these, so anyone could apply for these, so they really, we don't really know the need at this point as to whether you need some sort of designation.
You're exactly right, except for that...
The after-school program.
The after-school, the after-school teacher-coach, I'm also looking for one right now, so that could apply right now, that is, an open position that's advertised right now. And the summer, the summer ones, you're right, but I can assure you that I always do hire, I have hired previously, you know, the high school soccer track coach, the high school volleyball coach, and they have run camps for me every summer. So I do plan on hiring those types of positions back again this year under this ruling. Previously, they had handled it differently, they had a sign, a waiver, saying they disclosed what they did, and that was how the understanding of it was, it had to be done, and we did that through the Town Clerk's office, but now Bob has brought this to my attention in HR that we need to do it differently, so.
So, Mr. O'Leary, go ahead.
No, yeah, so, to me, I think the list of positions that we have before us are pretty encompassing, some of them may be, some incumbents currently need the status in order to continue. There appears to be a situation, some situations where potentially these other ones, so I'm okay with going with a litany of positions now, and then revisiting it a year from December.
So 15 months from now, we address it.
You know, and then just do it on the annual, you know, we can do it again in December also, just to reaffirm.
So I was going to ask, so I understand the two in your area, the one van driver for the counseling agent, what about the crossing guards? Do we need them? Or are we okay?
I don't, I believe we have a need for the positions, but I don't believe we have any candidates who would fall in this category right now. But we do have vacancies.
So we have a need, though. Okay, all right. Well, then it makes sense to me to do them all now, but we have to revisit them again.
But we can revisit them again in December, and then we can do, then get them in the annual...
I would like to do that, because I'd like to just get on that routine. Yes, Kate.
I just want to say one more thing in terms of this. I think if it's advertised and it's fully put out there, just because we do this doesn't avoid the issue of someone maybe having a leg up on someone else who's applying and other citizens who are applying, just because they're in here and they're known.
Yeah, no.
I'm not saying that's what you're doing, but...
No, 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 I advertise fully.
Yes, yeah.
And as we've spoken before, and I think as Human Resources has told you, I advertise my heart out, and I maybe get one applicant for these jobs. They're not very easy jobs to fill, they're all very seasonal and very part-time, so if I find qualified people that are willing just to work, you know, an hour a day, or a six-week interim in the summer, it's not a very easy thing to do. So for a director, I might get one or two applicants a year. I advertise my heart out on these jobs, and I use every resource I can, and even then I only get a couple applicants, but 90% of the time, they will fall into a position where they, they might not work for the North Reading school systems, but it is general that I get mostly teachers in.
Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll go through the motion this evening, we'll readdress it in December, which will give this more exposure, so we'll get some exposure from this evening's meeting, we'll get some more exposure for you in December, to reiterate to the town, to the local communities that may be listening and watching, to try to get more applicants as well. Okay? Take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to designate the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, in Parks and Recreation, Infant Toddler Instructor, After School Instructor-Coch, Summer Program Instructor-Coch, Summer Program Director, Summer Program Assistant Director, Summer Counselor, for Police, the Matron, and the Crossing Guard, and for Council on Aging, the Van Driver.
Second, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
One absence. Okay. We have about five minutes. I'm not sure we can do the intermunicipal agreement with Andover and Portable Water and the wastewater update, but I'll leave it up to you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I believe we can do at least one of them, which is number six, relative to the intermunicipal agreement with Andover for Portable Water.
Okay.
My understanding is that the Andover Water Selectment will be considering the extension of the existing intermunicipal agreement that they're meeting this evening, with the goal of providing us a document for our review and approval no later than the October 2nd Town Meeting. I was hoping that we would have a draft of the document in hand right now. I do not have a draft of the document at this point in time, but I'm sure that I'll receive something shortly. It should be fairly straightforward, based on the terms we've discussed on the existing intermunicipal agreement being extended, but, you know, we'll see when the language comes along. And if you would like, I'll try to keep going through number seven.
I just question for Mr. O'Leary, if I could. So, Mr. O'Leary, during your discussions since the last time we met, any, do you see anything changing on that?
No, what Mr. Mosseri and I and Mr. Gilberto asked the Town of Andover to do is to basically extend the intermunicipal agreement, not necessarily incorporating the terms and conditions which they have offered us for a long-term agreement. So basically, the two one-year extensions, and that's what we're anticipating they're going to be voting on this evening. They were asking if they should include those terms and conditions as a basis for beginning for negotiations with us. We told them we didn't think that was necessary, or warranted, or desired. What we're looking for was an extension to the current intermunicipal agreement, which would provide us the opportunity to review their proposal for an extended period of time. Again, we've set up April 30th for ourselves to take a look at the proposal, and then in the meantime, we will continue to negotiate terms and conditions for a long-term agreement, separate from the intermunicipal extension, agreement extension. So we're anticipating tonight, they're going to be voting on the extension only, which is the two one-years, which was proposed in that whole summary of terms that they offered. And as Mr. Gilberto pointed out, we expect to see something later on this evening from them or tomorrow morning. And we have another meeting set up with them shortly. We continue to meet.
Mr. Minipelli, you're good. Mr. Mosseri, you all set on this?
Yeah, I think Steve covered it.
Are you good? Michael, go ahead, you have about three minutes.
Sure. So related to number six on the agenda tonight, number seven, excuse me, relative to water and wastewater, so as was discussed at the two meetings in August, September, and September, relative to the proposal from Andover, we will be requesting funding at the October Town Meeting, is an article in the warrant, for continued evaluation of the water and wastewater alternatives, including, and with a close look at, Andover. And the goal we've been discussing, as was in accordance with the board's vote, is to conclude that evaluation so that a final decision may be made as to which of the paths, Andover or the MWRA, that we're going to pursue, that a final decision would be made on that in no later than April of this coming year, April of 2018. Related to that, we are working through the Department of Public Works and our consultants to meet with the appropriate permitting authority to better understand their expectations relative to the permitting associated with all of the options that are on the table, including the permitting process that we're already in. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to meet with them as soon as the beginning part of next week, if my recollection is correct. The impact that that has is, on us right now, is we have a projection that's been provided to us by our consultants for a cost associated with that study. That cost was $325,000, and that's the midpoint of the range that they provided us. Excuse me. Depending upon the outcome of that meeting with the permitting officials in Boston, there may be a determination that it's more advantageous to request a different amount, either more or less, depending upon where we're at, and that's something that would need to be further vetted at the October 2nd Board Meeting, immediately preceding the October Town Meeting.
So how does this impact our DEIR schedule?
So that's part of the conversation that we need to have with them, relative to our ability to, to what their recommendations might be, relative to handling that. Right now, we are still within the permitting process, leading up to an FEIR being filed, that would be the next benchmark for the MWRA process. I think our goal and our desire would be to continue to leave that suspended permitting activity rather than a terminated permitting activity, but that's something we need to discuss with them relative to the timelines.
I'll get an update on that. All right. Any questions? Mr. Mosseri?
Just a comment that Steve and I will present a report at the October Town Meeting, just to bring the town up to date on both paths that we're on.
Okay. And Mr. Mosseri or O'Leary, have you been able to reach the moderator, just to make him aware?
No, I'm committed to do that, I will reach out to him. Once we get a little more definitive in relation to the discussions with the permitting agencies and what we're going to be doing, I'll reach out to the moderator and inform him that we'll probably want to talk about all those articles at the same time.
Because we're going to need more than five minutes.
Yes, all at the same time, make the presentation, and then just take them up.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'll have that discussion with the moderator.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I think that's perfect, and the timing. I have a public hearing notice. Mr. Gilberto, I'm going to, if it's okay with you, I'll read the public notice while you're getting that up and running. Okay. See how blind I'm getting, how far away I have to put it now? Notice of informational hearings. The North Reading Board of Selectmen does hereby notify the residents of the Town of North Reading that hearings on the following articles contained in October 2nd, 2017, Town Meeting warrant will be held Monday, September 18, 2017, 8:00 PM, Room 14, Town Hall. Article 1, hear and act on reports of town offices and committees. Article 2, prior year bills. Article 3, transfer from Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Article 4, appropriate money to stabilization fund. Article 5, transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. Article 6, amend FY 2018 operating budget. Article 7, fund repairs to town buildings. Article 8, fund town facilities master plan. Article 9, appropriate supplemental funds for JT Berry Lowell Road property. Article 10, appropriate funds for study and design water/wastewater connection. Article 11, authorize intermunicipal agreement with Town of Andover in home rule petition for portable water. Article 12, fund construction of pump station, Reading and North Reading water system improvements for MWRA, water interconnection, and acceptance of water for MWRA. Article 13, authorize intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Reading in the home rule petition for portable water. Article 14, authorize Article 97 legislation for portable water interconnection with Town of Reading. Article 15, amend code, general bylaws, social host responsibilities. Article 16, amend code, general bylaws betterment assessments. Article 17, prepay money for special counsel legal expenses. Article 18, sale of land, 8 Devens Road, MAP 42, Parcel 71. Article 19, acquire property for public portable water main, 100 Lowell Road, MAP 14, Parcel 9. These hearings are held pursuant to Section 23B of Chapter 39 of the Massachusetts General Code, Open to Meeting Law, General Laws, the Open Meeting Law. Any interest citizen is welcome to attend, participate in the hearing. Notice of explanation. It is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Board of Selectmen to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. It is our belief that these informational hearings will foster and enable more participation in town government by its citizens. The hearings will also allow the board to make informed and considered recommendations to the Town Meeting. We sincerely hope that you will join us for these hearings and attend the Town Meeting on October 2nd, 2017. Board of Selectmen. Mr. Gilberto, we don't have a motion, but I don't know if we need one to actually enter to the hearing?
Nope. Just... No, I believe we read the hearing notice, and then we proceed.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
And there are motions in the packet separately relative to the recommendations for those for which recommendations have not yet been made. I don't know if the board wishes to do those along the way, or wishes to do them afterwards.
Yes. Yeah, I have some, you know, I kind of went through this, 19 articles, that's about almost four per person, but I was trying to look at this this afternoon, and certain board members, certain board members have been working on certain articles, so I've tried to divide it up equally. So I'll make some recommendations, if any board member has an objection to what I have come up with, you can let me know. So we'll start with Article 1, and I'll let you know.
Certainly. So Article 1, the standard article to hear and act on reports of town offices and committees. We anticipate hearing reports from the following committees, the Economic Development Committee, the Athletic Facilities Committee, relative to the construction project for the restroom and concession facility at Arthur Kenny Field, and the Recycling Committee. This is a summary of available funds, so you'll note that we have some $6,448,570.20 available across all funding sources, but you'll also note that we do not have included in that number the certified free cash available as of June 30, 2017. We expect, we expect to have that number any day now, and certainly will have it before October Town Meeting. The same is true for water retained earnings, which will be certified in the coming days. We've identified funding sources for the articles here in a summary fashion, I can speak more directly about them on an article-by-artikel basis, that might be more helpful.
Do you want me to move on, make a motion on Article 2?
We already recommended Article 1, but...
No, we haven't got to Article 2 yet, I'm sorry.
We haven't, we haven't decided on...
We haven't made a, yeah, we haven't made a decision on 2.
Because we didn't know the...
Sure. So Article 2, I'm moving along in the presentation, is a transfer of $9,475 from the DPW in employee benefits in fiscal year 18, in order to pay years of a prior, bills of a prior year, and the Finance Director, I believe, can elaborate as to what the expenses were.
We have two invoices, one is for the Department of Public Works, and the other is for public safety, disability invoice that came in after the fiscal year was closed. And this is what they totaled combined, $9,475. However, there could be possibly one more, but right now, these are the only ones that have been received by the Finance Office.
So we'll continue to hold off our recommendation until Town Meeting floor.
Which is the way we voted.
Yep, that's the way we voted.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend a Town Meeting, Article 2, prior year bills.
Second. Which is redundant, but it's okay.
No, no, we've already, I think we've already taken that action. I don't think we necessarily have, need a motion.
The only motion we would need to change something...
Unless you want to reaffirm, right. Yeah, if that's already texted, we can take it again.
So we already did that, I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
We've already recommended a Town Meeting, so...
You have. Sometimes the board elects to modify its recommendation based on further information.
Yeah, we're going to change our recommendation.
But if there's, no, but if there's going to be potentially something else coming up, then we should wait.
We should wait.
So I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. Mr. Mosseri?
Mr. Chairman, if this is a public hearing, right, should we not go through each article one at a time?
Yeah, we are, that's what we're doing.
Do we skip one?
We already made a recommendation on one, Michael went through it, we had already voted.
Do we ask anyone if they have any questions, or...
I will make sure I ask. If you, and as we go along, I would assume that it was pretty clear, if we come across an article, anybody here would like to have a question, just come right to the podium, and I will recognize you. Just give me your name and your address. Please continue on Article 2. Our three now.
Article 3, a transfer of funds to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. The balance is just over $1.1 million. The article at this point contemplates adding $200,000 from certified free cash for fiscal year 2018, the capital plan, to increase the fund balance to just over $1.3 million. And the board's previous action was to recommend a Town Meeting. Again, we are awaiting the certification of free cash, the board may wish to withhold its further action until free cash is certified.
Mr. Minipelli, you have a question? Okay, thanks.
Article 4 would be, it's a routine article that we keep on the warrant for transfer into the rainy day fund. The current balance is $2.259 million. Right now, we do not have a plan for a transfer in. We'll make a final recommendation, however, prior to Town Meeting, once available funds are certified.
When was the last time we made a transfer in?
Last October Town Meeting. Was it $500,000?
$200,000.
$200,000, okay.
I rounded up.
Any more questions? Anyone else? Okay.
Michael, were you going to assign as we went?
That is, yeah, we'll do that at the end, once we go back.
All right, fine.
It's an agenda, as a separate agenda audit outside the hearing, Bob.
It's an agenda, as a separate agenda audit outside the hearing, Bob.
Article 5, again, standard article relative to funding our other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. The present balance approaching $900,000, and it's a balance accrued in a fairly short period of time due to the aggressive funding that we do at the June Town Meeting. We don't traditionally fund this article at the October Town Meeting. We're not recommending a funding, funding this article at the October Town Meeting at this time. We'll make a final recommendation once the totality of available funds is certified. And our last transfer in was at the June Town Meeting, in the amount of $300,000?
Correct.
No, that must be with the discrepancies. It's a different fund balance in the warrant that was printed.
Right. It's 1.142, 547 in the warrant.
Okay.
So I can explain that. I'm not sure where, that probably was the previous fund balance. So at June Town Meeting, we put $250,000 that was remaining in the health insurance budget into the OPEB trust. We then transferred that, those funds out, and then we put $300,000 in as part of the FY 18 revenue plan. So that is what brings it to the 892.
So the 250 wasn't netted out?
That's correct.
Too bad.
We just have some explaining to do at Town Meeting. So just make sure we're prepared to explain that. Okay, any more questions on that? And we'll just wait for Town Meeting to make the recommendation.
That'd be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Next.
Article 6, relative to amending the fiscal year 2018 operating budget. There are four particular areas that we are looking at right now for amendment, and I'll ask the Finance Director to speak to the dollar amounts on each, and I'll give a brief description of the subject matter. First is, we're all familiar of the activities required relative to Martin's Pond. It includes both the testing at the location, which we were required to do three times, as well as signage, rental of signed boards, and other expenses associated with it. That's the first area, which will be transferred into the Department of Public Works budget. And if you could speak to the dollar amount?
For Martin's Pond testing, DPW has spent approximately $5,000.
That includes roughly $3,000 worth of testing expenses and a balance for rental of signage and construction, posting of signage. The second area is a Board of Health refrigerator. Their Board of Health has been advised that in order to store seasonal flu vaccine, on premises, it must have a particular piece of equipment manufactured to a particular standard, which has a particular cost associated with it, that we're proposing to transfer funds into their budget at the October Town Meeting in order that that equipment might be procured.
The potential cost for this refrigerator is between $1,500 and $7,000.
Say that again.
The range, the potential cost is $1,500 to $7,000.
The department will be...
So waiting for something to go on sale, I guess, yeah.
Going off of the information that I received.
Who are we going to have?
Yes.
I looked at the Town Administrator for that.
Yes. Though they're in the process of getting, of identifying a final cost, but this is to make the board aware that this is something that's pending, that was not anticipated even two weeks ago at our last discussion. We'll have a dollar amount at the October Town Meeting.
Where's it going to be housed?
So my understanding is the intention is to house it here in the Board of Health, in, most likely in a larger of the two offices that they have. That's my understanding. Or in here in the back corner.
Spits a fridge.
What kind of a refrigerator is it?
I can provide the board a more detailed report.
Real time control temperature.
There is a minimum criteria that the State Department of Public Health requires for the equipment. And we will encourage them to look more towards the $1,500 model than the $7,000 model.
Whatever works, but...
Continue.
The third area is...
Excuse me, we don't have one now, or do we?
I believe we do have a fridge now, but I do not believe it meets the standard required by the Department of Public Health. My understanding is correct.
Okay.
Okay. The third budget amendment is relative to the Assistant Building Superintendent. It's a position that we created two years ago, but filled approximately one year ago. And over time, based upon the structure of other positions within other divisions of the Department of Public Works, the department has stepped forward with regard, with human resources and recommended an adjustment to the compensation in the position. The position has been filled, it is filled right now by a contract, an individual employment contract employee. And I'd ask the Finance Director just to speak to the dollar amount.
The dollar amount that is necessary to increase this position would be $2,800.
And the fourth pending area that we are looking at right now is relative to amending the table of organization to create a Department of Public Works Operations Director position. And this is something that's come out of a recommendation from the department head in order to make additional modifications to the administrative structure of the department. We do not have a dollar amount fixed with it right now. It would be funded out of the salary pool after further consultation with the board and after further analysis is conducted, but we felt it was appropriate to identify that this is a position that we would be looking to add to the Department of Public Works table of organization. We do expect that as a result of doing that, we would be eliminating another position within the table of organization as well, or at least not filling that position, so that there would be no net increase. But we do expect that there would in all likelihood be an increase in the hourly wage for the position that we're looking to create.
Mr. Doleary.
Are we going to be getting a presentation on this? As far as what the position, will we contemplate the position? Maybe I missed it?
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't miss it?
You did not miss it.
I didn't miss it.
You did not miss it and...
We waited for you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. All right, so this is a, full-time equivalent's going to remain the same, but we're looking to increase job responsibilities to another position?
That's correct.
And this would be in what area of DPW, I guess, other than operations?
Yeah, it would be charged with oversight for, across the divisions, excluding buildings and grounds and engineering.
Okay, I guess the timing of this in relation to not having any more discussion about it yet, the need is immediate, or...
I would say that...
Obviously, because it's being proposed, but...
There's an increasing need with regard to it, yes.
I guess I just haven't been privy to, and maybe other members have been, but I have not.
Nor have I.
Nor have you?
I haven't. I haven't either.
Okay. And again, I don't...
So we're not requesting approval from the board tonight, as I mentioned, because we're looking to finalize some recommendations.
We're going to have it in a couple of weeks, though.
We are. And I think our, I'll speak for myself, but after discussion with the chairman, the intention was to brief the board insofar as this may have an impact on collective bargaining and strategy discussions.
Which will start tomorrow, so we need to have a discussion tonight. But I will remind the board that we have a lot of acting positions, the general foreman, the cemetery, the highway, water, and the proxy positions are all acting today.
Well, the individuals in there are in acting capacity, but the positions are permanent positions.
But to become, to get them out of the acting, we need to get this sort of figured out so everything else can...
Okay, again, this is just something that's, that's come up and, other than...
New today.
15 minutes ago, yeah, no, excuse me, five minutes ago. Unaware.
Yep. You will go home, you will be well aware before you go home this evening.
Okay.
And then I think there's one more thing missing, unless, you're not, are you all set with that one? Is there one thing missing? We talked about time cards?
Was there a dollar amount? There is no dollar amount yet?
Not at this time, no.
Time card system. Do we want to address that under FY 18?
So I believe that we have that addressed through the budget already. That was more about strategic planning area, if I recall correctly.
So we already have the funding line?
I believe so, yes. I looked at the Finance Director, but I believe we took care of that in June Town Meeting.
Are we referring to the time clock within the Department of Public Works, or are we reviewing, referring to townwide time sheets?
Town, townwide.
So we need to look into that, and the Town Administrator mentioned FY 19 for that. And we potentially would do that through Munis, and we could have that available to us at this time. We would just need money for implementation.
And when we get to the strategic plan this evening, I'll, I'll talk more about that. That's my confusion on. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to capture anything here.
It wasn't our intention, at least. We were intending, I think, to make a request as part of the FY 19 budget process.
Anybody else, any questions on Article 6? Okay, continue.
Article 7, funding repairs to town buildings. This is an article that we've done annually in the amount of $50,000. We have four projects identified here. We're repairing the entrance, priming and painting the front of the building at the senior center. An upgrade to security cameras and repairs to the security camera system at the police department. Fire protection, security alarm upgrades and roof repair at the Department of Public Works complex, and replacement of the floor of the elevator at the public library. And again, these are for projects that do not exceed the threshold of $25,000 for capital improvement and are funded outside of the operating budgets.
Any questions from the audience? Board members?
The, just, as far as the senior center, the sign at the senior center is faded and deteriorating, is that included or not?
I would look to the Department of Public Works Director.
Not at how it is. No, it's not.
Is that going to be under CIP?
I'm sorry?
No, it's a small, a small dollar amount.
Well, I'm not sure why we didn't have it here then.
I'm just asking.
No, I thought...
Maybe it's back on the radar.
Okay.
I would assume.
I think it, as well as the sign at the Flint Memorial Library are both in need of attention. The sign at the Flint Library is also in need of similar attention. Maybe that's something we can look at.
Okay. I expected that it was going to be here too. Okay. Continue.
Next article?
God bless you, Phil.
Does the board wish to make a recommendation relative to this article?
We already did.
Oh, you did? Excuse me.
We're not looking to change it.
Article 8, relative to funding the town facilities master plan. This is something that I noted at the last meeting, was an order of magnitude of approximately $150,000. Further evaluation of the scope in order to include the close evaluation of the Town Hall and the fire station, the total projected amount to procure the entire contract would be $200,000. So it's a change, again, we've been refining the scope as we've moved along, but we want to make sure we have the appropriate dollar amount identified here. Something that continues to evolve and will be subject to procurement, but we believe that that's a more tolerable number in terms of being able to achieve the goal that was outlined at the last discussion.
Mr. Maseri.
What's the source of funds?
Free cash.
So it's $200,000?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend $200,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? None being heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, one absent.
Article 9.
Just so you're, I think it was 150 printed in the warrant, two, that we already...
That says, that says an explanation. It wasn't in the warrant article, so...
I don't believe...
We're not limited to the...
It wasn't in the warrant, but we did, that was the number we used when we made the first recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Since then, the Town Administrator had new information, updated information, had required an additional $50,000 request. Article 9, unless anyone else has questions. Article 9.
Supplemental funds for the J.T. Berry Lowell Road property. Again, at this time, we are not anticipating a request for funding to be, to be made, so I wouldn't recommend any further action. The board can take any final action in the evening of Town Meeting.
I think we should recommend a passover.
I'd suggest doing so on the evening of Town Meeting, just to keep our options available. You know how conservative I can be with regard to it, just in case.
All right, that's fine.
But we do not expect a funding request, especially given the support of the Finance Committee.
Okay. Any questions? Just right to the podium, please, if you don't mind.
George Longo, 18 Ridge Road. I'm not up to date on what's happening with that J.T. Berry property, everyone, and what the town is looking at, how the, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to raise, or ask the question, but what is the plan for its use? What are we...
Sure.
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, through you. So the property that, the town has gone through a procurement process...
Right.
...in order to seek proposals for the reuse of the property. We received a proposal that was recommended, or selected by the Board of Selectmen upon the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee to construct 450 units of age-restricted 55-plus townhouses.
So that's still the current plan?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, okay.
This article would basically allow us to fund any costs associated with the closing of the sale of the property. Most of those costs will actually end up being partially reimbursed out of the, actually fully reimbursed, out of the operating, out of the proceeds from the sale that we split with the state. But we're not expecting to need any additional funding at this point in time.
Okay.
We're just putting it in there just in case. Any other questions? Please continue, Article 10.
Thank you. Article 10, so this would be to fund a study and design for the water and wastewater connection to evaluate alternatives, including but not limited to the Town of Andover, as a follow-up to the board's two discussions relative to water and wastewater. I said see additional slides in here, and we intend to incorporate the longer presentation that was made at the two previous board meetings. For purposes of brevity, I haven't put them in here. Effectively, the funding source here would be borrowing through the water enterprise, and we expect the amount to be $325,000. With the one caveat that we'll be meeting with the permitting authorities, and if their recommendation changes that, then we'll bring that back to the board for potential change. But we do not have a change to the number at this point in time.
You're going to use enterprise funds?
That's our plan, yes.
$325,000, okay. Okay?
Not all, not all.
No.
Not all enterprise.
Not all enterprise.
Oh, because of the wastewater, right.
Okay.
So the Finance Director is reminding me that a portion of it is wastewater funded, will not be funded in that fashion, will be funded out of either borrowing or out of a balance of free cash.
Okay.
What the, what the allocation of that is, we don't know right now. We're looking to get that from our consultants, and again, this is something that's been developing over the past three weeks and continues to develop in the next week.
That was going to be my next question, is how we're doing the wastewater piece from this enterprise fund.
Thank you.
If you can let us know by Town Meeting. Yes, Mr. Maseri?
I think we should, I'll make a motion to change recommend to make a recommendation at Town Meeting. Since originally, we thought it was all being put on the water, enterprise.
Oh, I don't think we ever, I was surprised when the Town Administrator said that, because I've never heard that we're going to pay the full amount through the enterprise. The wastewater piece, we've always talked about paying it through other sources.
I asked, what's the source of funds?
Which they're going to make the recommendation to us prior to Town Meeting.
Depending upon the allocation of the dollar amount, we'll have a recommendation. If it's a smaller...
Either way, we're going to be in favor of the $325,000 that was over. It's going to be funded, but just for disclosure purposes and transparency, it's $325,000 that we're going to have to come up with to evaluate the Andover proposal.
I would assume significant portion of it will be handled through the enterprise fund and then, I mean, I don't have, I don't think you have a slide tonight to break out the $325,000.
No, we don't have, we just don't have that number available to us right now.
But I believe the board's still in full favor. Mr. Maseri, you have some objection to the recommendation that we've made previously?
No, I don't have a recommendation, I'm just making the point that we don't have the full breakdown of that, that expenditure, nor do we have the secondary source of...
that expenditure, nor do we have the secondary source of, for funding.
Okay, well, we'll get some, we'll hopefully have that information.
Isn't that, I doubt if it's going to change your recommendation.
And I think we've already, this has already been printed in the warrant as far as recommending, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
All right, I'll back off.
You go, withdraw your motion. Okay. Thank you.
I'll assume that we'll have that information at our meeting prior, prior to town meeting.
Yes, we hope to have it there early to mid part of next week.
Okay.
Pretending to the wastewater, um, I went to the meeting that you had at the high school a while back with, um, the town of Reading, and, um, there was some discussion on wastewater connection. I'm just wondering if the plan with Andover is going, if the wastewater plan is going to essentially be the same, whether it's with Andover or with Reading, in terms of what gets tied into it. Um, I believe at the meeting earlier, there was some talk about, um, Route Twenty-Eight tie-ins, and I don't, and maybe Martin's Pond, and I'm not sure if Conquered Road was going to tie into that as well, but it was, at that meeting, it was stated that in terms of typical residents being tied in, that is something that is not being looked at, and if it does get looked at, it's way in the future. I'm just kind of wondering what, what if there, what if any difference there is in the wastewater plan between Andover and, uh, Reading.
Mr. O'Leary, go ahead.
A couple of different things, first of all, this is more in relation to our current plan of what was originally going to be tying into the MWRA for potable water, drinking water. In order to get the appropriate permits, we have to do a more detailed plan in relation to not only potable water, but also wastewater. So, it's, we're in the process of responding to the appropriate authorities as to what our long-range plan is, short-term for potable water, and long-range for wastewater. It was not anticipated, based upon our consultants and studies that we've done, the vast majority of our wastewater would probably go to the Great Alards Sewer District, not MWRA. And as far as the response to the permitting authorities, that's part of what our, our game plan was, and we still have to study what the feasibility is for tying in through Andover to Great Alards.
Okay.
Since that time, since that last meeting, which was a year, year and a half ago, whatever it was, year, whatever it was, uh, now, we, we may have an opportunity to tie in to the MWRA for portion of Conquered Street. That's new. You know, before, we weren't allowed to, just the Teradyne property was tied in to, uh, MWRA. There may be an opportunity for us to tie in that mile, mile and a quarter of Conquered Street to the MWRA. That also is being studied now. You know, as far as timelines, certainly the potable water is our most pressing issue, and that's what we have to address first and foremost. It's just a question as to whether or not the permitting authorities will allow us, or wish for us to simultaneously have all the information as to what our long-term plan is for wastewater. With this, uh, opportunity with Andover, there appears to be more of a, uh, an appetite for them to assist us in getting into the Great Alards Sewer District sooner rather than later. But that's something that the board hasn't fully considered yet. But we have to respond to the, uh, to the FEIR, DEIR, and FEIR process, to these permitting authorities, as to what our long-term plan is for, not just drinking water, but wastewater. So, that's why we have to spend the money now to do it.
Okay. I just didn't know if-
You won't be tied in, you won't be tied in next week or, or, you won't be tied in next week or next year, or probably two years or five years from now.
What's that?
So, you won't be tied in probably for a while, if at all.
To what, the water or the sewage?
The wastewater.
Oh, the wastewater.
Wastewater, so you don't have to worry about that right now. But again, as far as the wastewater, we have to do the study, we have to do the analysis, we have to determine what we think the usage is going to be in, what the long-range plan as far as tying in.
Are we just thinking that the wastewater plan, if the one that was done to tie into Reading would be applicable?
There wasn't any real, there wasn't any plan to tie in wastewater with Reading.
Oh, you didn't do it, or wasn't part of it at all?
The long-range plan for wastewater was Great Alards Sewer.
Okay.
We now may have an opportunity to tie in Conquered Street only through Reading. But that's new, that's recent.
The MWRA, basically, didn't have additional capacity to sewer. They've got some downstream issues they have to fix first. The extension at Conquered Street, which is just a mile point something, is, I guess, something that they said we could, they could probably provide to us without impacting their issues downstream.
Does that go through Wilmington, or does that go through?
It'll be Reading.
Reading.
It goes to Reading also?
It goes to Reading.
Okay. Any other questions on this article? Okay, please continue, eleven.
Article Eleven, Would Authorize the Board of Selectmen to File Special Legislation and to Enter Into a Ninety-Nine Year Agreement, Up to a Ninety-Nine Year Agreement with Andover for Potable Water. And this is something that would be, um, associated with the potential pursuit of a long-term, uh, relationship with Andover, providing a hundred percent of our water.
Any other questions on this article, we've already recommended?
Again, just in the way of explanation, uh, again, we'll be looking for support from town meeting for this home rule petition to allow the board to have the opportunity, just put the, the tool in the toolbox between now and April, which is the date that we set, uh, to make a determination that if we decide to go with Andover, we have to file a home rule petition and have special legislation filed in order to enter to, into this agreement. Uh, so we'd like to have the opportunity to do that sooner than rather than later, rather than waiting until next June, uh, to come back to town meeting, if we decide to take advantage of it. Just to jump ahead to Article Fourteen, we're looking for, again, special legislation, potable water interconnection with Reading, because it has to cross some conservation land, again, we'll take legislative action. So, what the board is asking for in these two instances is authorization from town meeting to take whatever, uh, appropriate action we deem, uh, appropriate after due consideration, uh, in the short term, rather than waiting again till next June to go back to town meeting. So, we're just looking for the authorization, the board is, uh, very intimately involved and actively involved in negotiating and evaluating things, and will be for the next several months. We just would like the opportunity to, uh, to take action sooner rather than later.
There's no funds, no funding associated with this article. Okay, any other questions? Yes, please.
District for a question.
That's okay, that's what we're here for tonight.
When, um, the, the Board of Selectmen, um, decide to go with Andover, does this automatically terminate any agreements with, with Reading? Or is it the intent to continue to pursue both for, for the next year or something?
Mr. O'Leary?
We're, again, we're, we're, we're moving in tandem right now.
Right.
Again, Andover came in, uh, very late into the game here, I mean, we had already appropriated the money, we're ready to go with the MWRA, and we're about ready to elect contracts, uh, for construction, uh, for projects in the town of Reading in order to, uh, meet our needs to tie us in. Uh, Andover's proposal, uh, was of interest enough and significant enough where the board deemed it appropriate to take the requisite amount of time to take a look at that proposal and put the MWRA basically on hold at this point. But we, we're still negotiating, we're still talking with them, we're still moving forward on both. So that, uh, we've set a deadline of April thirtieth for ourselves to make a determination, Andover or MWRA.
Okay.
And that's why we need this special legislation authorization on both of these, so that when we make that determination, we don't have to wait another three or four months to move forward and wait for the legislature to, to act, you could lose six months to a year. So, we're asking for the authorization now. So, we haven't made a final determination, uh, what we have made a determination that Andover's offer is significant enough for us to consider, and that, uh, we need to do our due diligence, and, and, you know, it's a shared responsibility to evaluate it. So, MWRA is still alive, Andover is alive, uh, so we're actually in a pretty good, uh, position.
Yep, okay.
About a year ago, we had one choice, now we have two.
Any other questions? Article Twelve.
Article Twelve, it's two components to it, the first is to authorize supplemental funding for the construction of the MWRA interconnection. No funding request is anticipated at town meeting, so we do not expect to request funding, any additional funding, uh, appropriation. This article would also authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any remaining action to finalize joining the MWRA for water, including, uh, processes for, uh, the repayment of the so-called buy-in cost to the MWRA. There's a specific authorization for borrowing that we believe we may be required to have in hand. We will be requesting that authorization at town meeting. Uh, it would be the final step, uh, required for, um, signing off for the buy-in, the MW, for the, for the MWRA, if that is a direction that we opt to go in come next April.
Okay, any questions?
I didn't understand that.
Sure, so, there's two pieces of this article. The first would be to fund any additional cost that we would need, in addition to what was funded at the June town meeting, for construction, in order to complete construction of the interconnection. We do not have any projected additional costs for that work right now, so we won't be asking for any funding for construction. But there is a requirement for authorization to borrow from the MWRA in a financing that they provide to the town for the buy-in cost associated with the MWRA. We would be seeking that authorization at this town meeting.
That's it.
Authorization for borrowing, that's correct.
Give us the authority, town meeting gives us the authority.
And this is borrowing that's been discussed in the two-to-three-year planning process for the MWRA, for a cost that's been well-known and well-publicized, um, that's been built into our cost model for, um, potentially going to the MWRA.
And let me just add a couple of things to maybe clarify it a little bit more. Mr. O'Leary has explained to you about this path of trying to get to April. If we get to April and we make our determination, well, one, once we go through October town meeting, we're going to have the authority now, if the decision in April is to go with Andover, we're going to have all the authority we need to go forward. We're going to come back for additional funds down the road, but we'll at least have the authority to go forward. If we decide to go with MWRA, we're going to have the authority to go forward, whatever path we pick, by the way we have these articles structured, and the way we have them ordered. That-
Yeah, uh, uh, ju-just for the clarification, you know, we've already appropriated money for the construction of the pumping station. We just weren't sure, again, we haven't gone out to let the contracts yet, uh, we were intending on getting to that point shortly. Uh, so this was almost a placeholder to, if we needed more money, to get it. In addition to that, there's the seven-point-six-million-dollar buy-in at a zero percent interest rate from the MWRA to be paid over twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, that's what we need the authorization for. So, basically, that's all we're going to be looking for, so authorizing the board to enter into that agreement with the MWRA. Construction costs appear to be covered, based upon our estimates, if we move forward to build a pumping station.
But if you go to Andover, you don't need this pumping station.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
But we want to have-
We have all the money authorized and approved and ready to go with the MWRA, so we're all set, but so, but we may not have to spend any of it, if we go with Andover.
But until we get to April, but we don't want to be held up to have to wait till June to get this authority.
Yeah, because if we wait till June to go with authorization with the, uh, special legislation, you know, then you basically have six to eight weeks to get the legislature to act on it, and it's a, an election year, and they parogue the end of July, the chances of getting it done on a timely basis is-
Right, they take a summer break.
Somewhat slim. So, that's why we, we would be requesting the authorization, to get the authorization on both projects sooner rather than later. Uh, give us the, the time to, uh, do the due diligence, make a decision, determination, file the necessary legislation, and move forward rather than having to wait, lose six months to a year.
Any further questions?
Makes sense to you, George? Makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Good, that's good, we get his support, that's good.
Mr.-
Article Thirteen, again, related to, uh, the MWRA interconnection, and this is very similar language associated, as was presented for the Andover interconnection. This would authorize the Selectmen to file special legislation to enter into a ninety-nine-year agreement with the town of Reading, up to a ninety-nine-year agreement with the town of Reading, for potable water, uh, should the determination be made to follow that direction relative to our potable water long-term solution. Uh, this is something that we identified after the June town meeting, this past June, as, uh, an issue that would, that would be to the town's advantage to have in place, meaning the authority to have, uh, a long-term agreement with Reading, through whom we'd have to bring the water from the MWRA to the North Reading Town Line. We believe this would be to our advantage for both, for both communities, actually.
Any questions from the board? Any questions in the public? Okay.
And Article Fourteen, again, related to the MWRA interconnection. Uh, in our discussions with the town of Reading, it's come to light that some of the parcels that may or may not be impacted by the interconnection are Article Ninety-Seven-protected land, it's a land that's owned by the town of Reading, located on Mill Street, along both sides of the town's border, so Reading owning land in the town of Reading, and also owning land in the town of North Reading. That's conservation, um, protected. Uh, there are four parcels, and I've kind of tried to draw a map to outline them. Uh, you see the two that are there in North Reading, and the two that are down there on either side of Mill Street in Reading. This would allow us to file jointly with the town of Reading for special legislation in order to construct on those parcels, if that were determined to be the required need from an engineering standpoint. Again, it would be done, this does not allow us to, North Reading on its own is, as far as we know, unable to achieve this. It needs to be done in conjunction with the town of Reading. Based on the timing of our town meeting, we felt this was the appropriate time to bring this up, in the event that a determination is made to go in this direction.
Okay, any questions? Next article, please.
Article Fifteen, Would Amend the General Bylaws to Create a Social Host Bylaw. And I know there's been a couple of discussions in front of the Board of Selectmen here, um, relative to this article. I'll read the summary here, and, um, if there's any further questions, uh, probably will defer, uh, to the, uh, to the police chief only from his firsthand knowledge, uh, of the, uh, the bylaw. Uh, but the bylaw would place responsibility on parents, guardians, and other individuals to ensure that unlawful activity does not take place at parties or gatherings held at private residences and other locations, including motels, hotels, and function, and other functions. State law does govern underage drinking and illegal substance abuse activity. This local bylaw would regulate this activity at the local level, while not impacting the criminal penalties for such behavior under state law, or the potential for civil liability. And violations of a local bylaw would be punishable by instituting fines of up to three hundred dollars. Again, I think as has been discussed, uh, there's certainly a punishment of a fine, but there's also, uh, other processes by which education of the property owner can take place, including a, a warning or lower fine being, uh, being issued.
So, this is one article the board hasn't taken the action on, I know we had some members that wanted a little more time to research it, look into it. If you have any more questions at this time, we want to discuss it, maybe, without Mr. Schultz here on this particular subject, I would suggest maybe we, yes, Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, since our last meeting, uh, the chief was generous enough with his time to spend some time with me, uh, to clarify for me, again, I, I had probably the most number of questions in relation to the redundancy of the, of the need for, uh, additional regulations and a bylaw that we already have, laws on the books that prohibit this type of activity. Uh, I'm satisfied now that this is a, um, would be a useful tool for the police department, uh, from a civil standpoint, rather than a criminal standpoint, to, uh, educate the public, uh, keep them better informed, uh, increase dialogue, and probably, uh, hopefully effectuate some, some good positive, uh, change in some of the views of some individuals. So, uh, I personally will be supporting the article. It's up to the board if they want to change the recommendation for this evening, or wait till, uh, town meeting. But I will be after my conversations with the chief, and again, I thank you, chief, for taking the time to speak with me, uh, will be supporting it.
Mr. Missary, you?
I was in support of it.
Okay.
I don't know where Andrew was.
He was, I, he was in support of it.
I think I was the only holdup. And, and again, I appreciate the, uh, members, my colleagues, uh, uh, providing me the opportunity to become a little better informed.
Will you take a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article Fifteen, amend the code, the general bylaws, the social host responsibility bylaw.
I have a motion, a second?
This is move to recommend, not recommend at town meeting, move to recommend.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
You already voted that.
But that's, I'm sorry. Move to recommend it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Missary, any more discussion? Any questions from the public? All good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, one absent. Article 16, 16, thank you.
Article 16, relative to betterment assessments. This article would modify the existing bylaw relative to betterments by eliminating the requirement that the town pay 50% of the cost of the project, allowing betterment projects to proceed in the absence of town funds. Right now, we have a bylaw in place that requires the town match up at least 50% of the cost. Oftentimes, we find ourselves in a situation where the town does not have any funding source available to match that cost. This could provide a tool available to those property owners who may wish to proceed with a betterment-funded project that's administered by the town and financed by the town with a long-term payback period when there isn't town funding available to augment it. And both the Public Works Director and the town engineer are here to speak further as to any questions that might come up relative to the proposed bylaw.
Any questions from the Board members?
Just give us a rundown, just currently what's required and why this is being proposed, again?
I'd ask either the Public Works Director or the town engineer, whichever your preference, Andrew. Andrew Lafferty, Public Works Director. So, the only change that we recommended on this was, currently, the way it's worded, the town is required to pay the 50% cost of the project. We've requested that it be changed, that the town has the option up to 100% to either assess the property owner, or if the town has the funds available, that would open up the option for the town to also pay their, pay a portion. The intent, the whole intent behind it was to, in the absence of town funds, to at least give the residents the option of, on a private way, to proceed with some sort of betterment, as compared to what seems to have happened in the past. In some cases is if the town didn't have their 50%, the option would kinda stop at that point. So, at least this gives a little more options for the residents to move forward if they desire.
Does this, Mr. Chairman, does this proposal preclude the town from being required to share in the cost with the people in the private ways? Does it get the town off the hook? Right now, we're saying that it has to be a 50-50 split. If the town doesn't have the funds, it doesn't happen.
Correct.
So, the town...
So, if that's the case, then the option is still there for the residents to proceed, and the town would therefore assess the full cost of the project back to the property owners over the long-term commitment.
What's the, say the property owners opt into this thing and pay the 100% for the betterment, as far as future improvements or maintenance or upkeep, does it, it doesn't necessarily become an acceptance street?
So, the...
So, what would be the expectation on the residents' part from the town, should the road need some crack sealing or resurfacing or...
So, it's our understanding through town council that the requirement is the road would become accepted. In order for this, in order for a betterment to happen, the road has to become accepted.
So, it has to be built to a certain standard?
It would have to be built to be an acceptable standard to the town.
Whereas currently, we share the cost with some residents to bring some substandard roads up to a less-than-acceptable standard in order to improve it, correct?
There's been projects in the past that have been done where the town has contributed with other entities to improve roads. After some discussion with town council, that really isn't the intent of the bylaw or the Mass General Law's betterments in the way it's supposed to be assessed.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is, you know, our past practice, while we haven't been able to do as much as we'd like to do, it allows us to, and again, it's a win-win because, you know, we send out crews every year to put some stone and dirt and create some more dust and fill in the potholes and the crevices that are created through the mud season. And again, we share the cost and basically bring it up to a better standard, but not necessarily to a full acceptable standard, which is better than nothing, you know? And again, the town shares it, but again, we haven't been able to do as much as we'd like to do. My concern is, is if we accept this, are we precluded from doing that anymore?
There's been no change to the town bylaw. It's my belief and it's the understanding with, speaking with town council, that we've been applying it improperly historically.
I'm okay with that.
Town council, town council has advised us that, under the betterment process, a town has to be accepted as a public road when the betterment is complete.
Okay. That's a betterment which is paid over, say, 20 years.
Correct.
Right? Whereas currently, our current practice is, you know, it's gonna cost, you know, $40,000 and it's 20,000 town, 20,000 residents, and it's kinda paid upfront and on a timely basis rather than overtime. Would that preclude us from continuing to engage in that type of activity?
I'm not aware of any policy or bylaw that allows us to do that, so I'm not sure. The only thing that, the only other piece that's out there for, on the public work side, is there is a, there is the authority for us to maintain public, private ways to keep them accessible to safety equipment, plowing, fire, and police, and that's done at a minimum cost.
Right. And again, I think that's, we've made these improvements under that guise, let's put it that way, where we have spent more than just bringing some fill-in and gravel to grade it out, or grade it twice a year to maintain it. We've actually been sharing with the costs with the residents, upgraded, in order to make that public safety accessibility better, without having to meet the minimum standards for accepted streets.
So, if I, my understanding of this bylaw, this change, it allows, right now, it's 50%. This allows us to go up, up to 100%.
Michael, you're missing...
No, no, yeah, yeah.
You're missing the point.
You're missing my point, is that, yeah, this goes up to, we can pass off 100% of the cost to the residents and bill them over 20 years.
Yep.
And, you know, maybe some residents would be willing to do that. But what our practice has been is, we'll do in any given year, you know, a group of residents on an unacceptable street will approach us and say, listen, you know, how much for the town to pay this thing? We'll split it with you 50-50 and pay right up front and do it. But when we do it, it's not necessarily to the CPCs or the bylaws, acceptable standards for an accepted street. You know, the width may be a little bit less, the underpinnings of it may be not the same as it should be if you're gonna have an accepted street. You know, my concern is, is that if we adopt this, are we precluded from entering into agreements with residents to do it in a more cost-effective manner, which is from a public safety standpoint, plowing standpoint, to the advantage of the community, and again, for ambulance and police and fire, a better deal? Are we precluding ourselves from that type of activity?
I don't believe adopting this would preclude us from that. I believe Mass General Law would preclude us from doing that, based on town council's advice.
But we're not gonna, we're not, we're not, we haven't, in the past, provided an opportunity for a betterment for our residents. What we've said is, we'll basically create a driveway for you and share the cost, you know? It needs the public safety.
Okay, so, if you read the article, it's at Section 2, 24, 25-2, Section 2. It talks about, we have to have a public hearing. Your partners on the private streets must vote on whether they want their street converted to a public street. If we do any of this work up here, they have to agree on it to become a public...
No, I understand that. I guess what I'm concerned about is, are we, by accepting, proposing this and accepting it, are we precluding ourselves from the previous type of activity that we've been engaged in? Because that may be more cost-effective to get some things done. This, you know, for a long term, you know, some of the residents might say, okay, over 20 years, I'll pay the betterment. You know, if the town's gonna split the cost or share the cost, they're not sharing it at all, but it's gonna get their street done, you know? That's a decision they have to make. But I'm concerned that, you know, on some of these smaller, unaccepted streets, where we have, you know, a few residents who are willing to share the cost on an immediate basis, pay it now, as opposed to through a betterment, are we gonna be precluded from doing that?
Mr. Gilberto?
I believe the answer is that we're technically precluded from it now, if I understand the opinion correctly. My understanding is that what we've done historically is, we've shared in the cost with the abutting property owners of 50-50 split or something like that, with a requirement that there be an upfront payment, because it hasn't really been assessed as a betterment, in order to do maybe those improvements to a lesser standard. I think the more common thing that's happened, and the more common instances that I'm familiar with, are that the development is, that the improvement is done in conjunction with the development in the neighborhood. There's a lot that's reconstructed and it's a requirement that a developer contribute. The more likely scenario, the more frequent scenario is that the town is making the improvement in conjunction with the developer. I don't think that the bylaw is gonna preclude that, but there may be other actions we wish to take to codify what we're looking to do.
I think what has happened in the past, and I may be criticized for saying what I'm about to say, oh, I'll say it positively, that the Community Planning Commission has been successful in getting developers to do additional off-site improvements at their additional cost in order to get approval for their proposal. It is not necessarily required of them because they had to build a lot, but for the time's sake of getting things approved, the developers have agreed to do these sorts of things. They weren't necessarily required to do so. So, you know, time is money. And so, they've been very successful in requiring developers to improve some unapproved streets, up to whatever the lot is they're looking to develop, or a portion thereof, whether it be through water lines or whether it be through pavement and road upgrades. We're not necessarily required to do so, and some developers have balked at it and have been successful in developing their lots without doing the off-site improvements. They've been able to wait it out. We shouldn't have to, you know, be dependent upon that. So, my only concern is, is if there is a, you know, a small street with some, you know, half a dozen residents or less, who are willing to share the cost of upgrading the access to their property and improving the public safety and wear and tear on our plowing equipment and maintenance and upkeep that we take care of on an unacceptable street already, lessing our, lessing our costs, we shouldn't preclude ourselves from doing so. And again, I know that, you know, I believe we've been doing it under the guise of public safety access, and maybe town council thinks that's a stretch, but it's worked, you know? And I just don't want to limit our ability to continue to do that with this. And again, this, again, unless the residents agree to it, you know, up to 100%, that's, I'm okay with this, I just don't want it to preclude us from continuing the practices that we've engaged in already.
Mr. Gilberto?
Yeah. I look at this as, this is requirements, if you're gonna allow the citizens to use the betterment process, therefore, it has to meet all these requirements. There's no restriction on what we've done in the past here. And I think what Andrew was stating was that, in the review, the town council says what we've done in the past may not meet all of the requirements, or any of the requirements of current state laws. And that may be just an interpretation, I don't know. I don't see this restricting what we've done in the past.
I just wanna make sure, or I'd like to know, but again, administrations change, interpretations change, you know? What would our, the current board and current administration's position be on a neighborhood who's willing to split the cost upfront right now, rather than going through this process, to make an improvement in the neighborhood, on an unacceptable street? Would we continue with the current practice, but also, again, this would provide for additional opportunities for people to spread out over 20 years, so that's a good thing. That's a good thing. Don't get me wrong, that's a good thing. I just don't want us, as an administration, to preclude some residents from engaging, rather than going through a 20-year betterment process, getting it done sooner rather than later, to a little lesser standard.
I read that we have that flexibility now. Now, we have it all the way up to 100%?
But if you do this betterment thing, it has to be, it has to be to a standard of an acceptable street. And to meet the standard of an acceptable street is a pretty tall task for many of the unacceptable streets in this community, and in some cases, probably impossible. So, I don't disagree, but this requires a certain standard of construction.
I, no, I see where you're going with it, so I'm not sure. You know, it's here for a reason.
I just wanna make sure that we, as an administration, for those areas that may not be able to even do this very easily...
Okay, but if the Board doesn't recommend this tonight, or we don't recommend it at town meeting and it fails, it sounds like to me the past practice is over regardless. That's my understanding. Mr. Gilberto?
Only if the government administration says that. If that's the case, I wanna hear it, and then we need to have another discussion.
I think that we have other steps that we would need to take in order to better memorialize and codify that past practice, if that's the intention. In other words, if we wanna have a partnership for road improvements that are not going to be improved to the standard of an accepted road, then we have some more work to do relative to our existing bylaws or new bylaws or even special legislation if required in order to do it, to comply.
Mr. Gilberto, will you be in agreement that's Article 16, if we, if it gets voted in favor at town meeting, takes away the flexibility that Mr. O'Leary is referencing?
Takes away the flexibility?
Yeah, we don't have that flexibility.
I don't see that it has any effect, one way or the other, on the flexibility.
Okay, so you're saying this bylaw, the way it's written, doesn't preclude us from going ahead and investing in a betterment that doesn't get it to the standard of an accepted road?
It doesn't preclude us in any way that we are not already precluded today.
Does it impede a past practice?
I don't know that it impedes the past practice either, to be candid with you.
Okay, then I'm in favor.
Is it the intention to allow for something similar to our past practice to continue?
I would say this, I've been, I've worked in communities where that past practice has been quite successful. I can't tell you exactly what, under what authority it was established, but it can be very, it can be very successful. So, I think if we can nail down how that would work, that would help us.
Aye.
I mean, right now, the way this happens is, you know, well beyond any planning scenario that takes place, we may become instructed by a, an approval that takes place from another regulatory board that we have a role in improving the road, without necessarily having had the opportunity to budget for it, to put the project in a queue. I think we should correct that, because often what happens is that other projects may suffer because of that. And that's not to say that it's not a good public purpose, but there could be a better planning effort at it, I think.
Well, I...
But I don't see this bylaw as promoting that.
We're gonna meet again a four-town meeting on the second. I'd suggest maybe between now and then, we could get some more information, just to answer Mr. O'Leary's concerns, questions, and we'll revisit it on the second.
Again, I think this is a good idea. I think it more comes down to, what is our current administration's policy going to be in allowing some residents of our community to approach the town on a practice of 50-50 split to approve the standard of the road in front of their home, not necessarily to the standard, you know? Without the betterment.
I'll speak for myself. I'm not gonna speak to the Public Works Director, but I'll speak for myself. I would like to see a structure in place that would allow us to continue to meet that need when the proposal comes forth from groups of residents. But I don't know how often that actually occurs. I think the more likely scenario is that the proposal comes associated with development. And that's not to say that it hasn't been a good thing either, but I, I'm not, I'm not familiar, at least, other than one inquiry we've received that I'm not totally familiar with, that the interest has been there to make those improvements from residents, existing residents only. Maybe, I mean, again, I've only got three years of history, so I don't...
Mr. Minipelli?
No, that, I had similar questions, so it would be helpful, I think, to hear from town council, because... Town Council, because my understanding was the same, if it's a betterment assessment, it's for an improvement that's to the benefit of the private parcel owner, and that's why it's a betterment assessment to begin with, but also, this seems to say that the process now will be that those private residents are gonna vote to say, you know, our street's gonna become an accepted public way, and the town can contribute up to a hundred percent of the creation of the public way, but then it's our responsibility after that, for everything after that, if it's a public way, obviously. So, versus now, how many private ways are there in the city, in the town?
I think there's a total of just over thirty. I think, if I remember correctly, there's somewhere around eight miles worth, obviously the majority of them are short streets.
'Cause I'm assuming that most of these parcel owners are gonna say, let's take a vote and make it a public way, and it takes that, you know, it takes that discretion out of the town's hands.
Specifically, in order to get up to the residents up at Swan Pond, there's a lot of town old land on the way there, along with some other property owners that don't acreage, haven't developed yet. So in order for, Mrs. Cravata's been fighting for this for years, so, Mr. Chairman, to further Mrs. Cravata.
Yes. Good evening.
What's going up, or there, did you go to the table or there? Phil, did you do that to her?
That doesn't look good.
It looks worse than it is.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, I'm Rosalie Cravata, at two-two-three Swan Pond Road. I, I just wanna make it brief, but you kinda covered a lot of things, Steve, that I, you know, some things that I wanted to say. I, okay, so obviously the current betterment is a fifty-fifty, and there's been many roads that were able to take advantage of that opportunity, and one of those roads actually is the beginning section of Swan Pond Road, the first half-mile, and that was paved, I think around nineteen ninety-nine, when Dave Hanlon was at the DPW Director. And that road was paved, and that was actually split fifty-fifty with, between the town of North Reading and Danvers. Danvers agreed to do that, because they own the rights to the water at the reservoir at Swan Pond. And I think it was last year, in twenty sixteen, the town actually repaved that first half-mile of Swan Pond Road, and made it an accepted roadway, so that it was eligible for Chapter Ninety funding, so that the state paid for that repaving of that section. Now that road was not brought up to whatever the current, you know, road standards are, so there's one particular case, that the improvement was made, but the road wasn't brought up to a certain, you know, width, that might be the standard now for developments that come into town. As, I'm representing myself and the majority of residents at Swan Pond that do want to have our road paved, I feel like we have been in the queue for a lot of years for this, going back since, like I said, nineteen ninety-nine, when the first section was paved, and the town then further. In two thousand and eight, paved Adam Street, which is the other road that goes on the other side of Swan Pond, and that was done with the fifty-fifty, so that residents had that cost share with the town. And fortunately for those residents, there was one resident that offered to put in that total fifty percent share for the residents, so that was paved in two thousand and eight. And we have, like I said, been kind of in a queue for at least ten years, to, this request been in, to have the final section of gravel road at Swan Pond paved. And unfortunately for us, we've had changes in the administration, with two DPW Directors, Dave Hanlon, you know, retiring, and then Dick Connavalli also leaving. And through Dick Connavalli's efforts, he actually came in and did some widening of the road, to try to help for fire and road safety. And we were, again, getting to the point where the discussion was there about the next steps for coming in and paving the road. So now here we are again, kinda starting up from scratch, and I would make an appeal to the Board that you consider keeping the fifty-fifty cost share for situations, you know, like our road. And like I said, this has been just an ongoing thing for many years up there, so I just wanna speak on behalf of the residents for that purpose. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Mr. Phil Cravata.
Please, right to the vote, if you don't mind.
The, I think what's being overlooked here is that it's the human part of it. It's like, it's very difficult to get the people in a community on a road like Swamp on road to all agree to do this. And, you know, I'm not the right person to do it, but Rosie's very good at that, and she communicates with the town and the DPW to that effect. And I think that, you know, part of the, this is sort of like a stumbling block to that, getting that kind of agreement with the people on the road. You know, to say that the town will pick up fifty percent of the paving cost, it's kind of a, you know, it's a positive thing to tell the people. The other thing is that the road is about, it's about a half-mile long, and there are sections in the road that are owned by the town. It's something that, like I say, well, like Rosie said, that, I think Dave Hanlon would have got it done, because he was getting to that point, then the guy retired on us. And Connavalli, I think, was, he was, you know, he was heading in that direction, I think, and, but I don't think this is, I mean, I understand what the intent is here, and I think it's important to, you know, the count of beans, so to speak, but, again, I think it's, it's in the interest of the town, I think, as much as it is in the interest of the people who live out there to get this done. We've been out there forty years, and so we've watched the town, and they've done an excellent job, bring out material, do the grading, and I wanna say that probably tens of thousands of dollars, and probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, in forty years, have gone into this, and we still have a dirt road. So at some point, somebody should have bit the bullet, I think, and each DPW Director realizes that this would be better for the town, if we did have the paved road. But, so I would agree with Rosie, I don't think it's, it's gonna be easy to get people to go along with and sign over the rights and say, this is a public way now, and you gotta pay it all. I do like the part of where it's spread out over twenty years, but I guess that, you know, that's pretty much what I got to say about that. So I guess I would say, I would rather see it stay the way it is. Our road is narrower in some spots, wider in other spots, and you're never, you're never gonna meet the requirements of the accepted road. The other thing that I sort of feel in my head is that it's technically a private way, but since the courts decided in nineteen fifty that nobody could block the road, nobody out there has ever tried to stop the public from going in there. So I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what the technical part of it is, but it almost seems to me like it is a public way. You know, if, since nineteen fifty, nobody has been stopped from driving there, walking there, jogging, walking, that sort of thing. I don't know if we need to get into that. It's one more stumbling block, I guess, to get people to say, you're gonna sign it away as a public way. They didn't do it on the other side, when that was done, and I don't really see there was any problem, or that there would be any problem. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just as a, an explanation to as far as Mr. Connavalli's tenure here, his focus was, again, and he had a lot of conversations with Rosalie, but, you know, his focus was on getting as many unaccepted streets, or portions of unaccepted streets, to an acceptable level to increase our Chapter Ninety funding, and did a pretty good job, I don't know how many additional miles he was able to include, which again, provides the town with additional revenues to maintain and upgrade, you know, streets. So, that was more his focus, and he had a considerable amount of success with it. Didn't get your road done, but, I mean, I've been sympathetic to the Cravatas for over forty years now, and.
No, I'll tell you, it's a pet peeve of mine to see these gravelled roads continue to get graded after every rainstorm, and it just doesn't seem to make sense to me that we continue to have our DPW crews go out there, bring out the equipment, bring new material, lay it down, another rainstorm comes, it goes away, they remove it, move it around again. It would be nice to have a plan, but I'm not so sure this bylaw precludes that from happening.
Again, most of my concern is, again, this is a vehicle by which, you know, maybe this neighborhood and other neighborhoods could take advantage of it and spread it over twenty years, and it becomes more palatable for people financially, and can the upgrades get done? The problem is, is that it has to be done to such a standard, that it's probably not realistic in some sections of the community, which is unfortunate. And I just wanna make sure that we don't abandon our past practice of approving some of these neighborhoods with a shared cost. Again, this also provides for passing off a hundred percent of this cost for the residents, as opposed to fifty-fifty, which is what our current practice has been. This allows up to fifty, you know, up to a hundred percent to be borne by the town or the residents.
The betterment.
You know, so, this way, it can get the taxpayers off the hook for taxpaying members of the community who are enjoying the same type of benefits. Yes, they bought into that type of neighborhood.
Last question on this, and we can move to the next article. Do we, are you saying that we've done this past practice, we have roads that we've done some improvements on to get them at a level, we've accepted those roads?
Not necessarily, no, we have not accepted those roads.
We've never accepted a road.
They are still unaccepted streets, but they're in far better condition. Now, there are some of those streets that we have upgraded, and gone back to again, as was pointed out by Mrs. Cravata, a section of Swan Pond Road, which was an unaccepted street, fifty-fifty betterment, fifty-fifty split, median cost taken care of to a certain point, and now the town has gone back, brought it up to the standard, and included it in the chapter, for Chapter Ninety funding. So, we've improved some of those unaccepted streets to a level that's acceptable, but, and that would be borne by the DPW.
Got it.
Steve, you know, just quickly on that beginning part of Swan Pond Road, that was, the town did accept that as a, approved it as an accepted roadway, so that it became eligible for Chapter Ninety, so they paved it that way, but that wasn't brought up to any accepted.
Any different standard.
No, it wasn't, it was, you know, the same with anything, so, it just seems like the town chooses to do it and make a roadway acceptable, it seems that they have chosen to do that in certain instances. You could very easily get another half a mile for Chapter Ninety funding, and just say, okay, we'll do that Swan Pond Road, there's another half a mile for the town, but, just making light, but, I just wanted to put that out.
Okay. Thank you. So does the Board wanna make a recommendation tonight, or wait till town meeting on this act, on this article? No motion, Mr. Maseri?
I can recommend this, I think it's, it would be valuable for certain areas of town, and what Steve says is also valuable for certain areas of this town. If in fact, there's some state requirement, or bylaw, or whatever, that you can't do it, maybe there's a workaround, and we should take care of it. Maybe we need another article that won't go in this town meeting, to deal with and document what we do in the other situation, 'cause I think you have both. And I see nothing in here that interferes with what we've been doing in the past. The only thing that might interfere with what we've been doing in the past is some state law. And I don't think we have all the information here to determine whether or not we're violating the law, or this is something that's come in place recently, that we have to take another look at. But this doesn't prevent us from continuing what we're doing, it's something else maybe prevents us from doing what we've been doing.
Mr. O'Leary?
And that's sad.
And again, I don't, I don't want our administration, should this prevail, to just point to this and say, this is the only way you can get your road done. But, that's probably the major concern.
If you want an accepted road, this article will help us get there. If you don't want an accepted road, you should still have a process in place to get.
But again, from the town's standpoint, we want an accepted road, because then it qualifies to Chapter Ninety, but it may not necessarily be feasible, economically feasible, to do eight miles of road to these standards. And yet it may be in everybody's best interest to invest in our community on the current practice of fifty-fifty split, to bring it up to a better standard, but not necessarily the standard. This, again, puts you in line with state statute and our current bylaws for an accepted street. And I'm telling you, for what's left in our community, and colleagues here know it as well as I do, most of what's left, probably, a lot of it wouldn't, wouldn't meet that standard, without infringing on people's property, you know.
And I haven't heard an objection from the administration that the past practice policy didn't.
No, I just heard some equivocations, gotta be careful, and I understand.
Do I have a motion on this? Okay, did you have one thing you wanted to say?
I just think that if we recommend this, the same process still applies here, where you've, you've got to get what it says is the majority of the residents on the street to agree to this anyway, so you're in the same spot of, you know, maybe not, not all those people are in agreement that, you know, we're gonna ask for this to be made into a public way, and then we're gonna accept the cost of the construction of it. And I, I mean, we have, we have other roadways, Central Street's a good example, it doesn't have sidewalks, it doesn't probably meet the conditions, but I think that in the process of those roadway improvement projects, I've gotta think that we've applied for some sort of variances or waivers, to be able to utilize the funding to pave roads that might not necessarily comply with every regulation there is. I don't think it eliminates the town's ability for our DPW to bring it, bring us a street and say, accept this as a public way, and here's how much it's gonna cost the town to improve it, and, you know, pave it, and take care of it, and here's what we're gonna need for waivers, because we can't do this, that, or meet this guideline or requirement. But I think this is something different than that. This is for private ways, that is gonna require the residents of the ways to say, yes, that's what we want, and throw it in the queue for DPW when the funds come available. So I don't think it puts you any closer to what your goal is, really, from the way it reads it. I don't know why, I'm not following, that's why I said, can we hold off till we get some more information? I don't follow why, you know, another type of process is unlawful, I don't follow that. So I would prefer if we could just get some clarification on why we need this, and does it eliminate the other routes that we could possibly take? I can't see it, but I'm not the town's council, so.
Well, we put this one on for another discussion on the October second meeting, prior to town meeting, try to get a little more information, if we could.
Can I just make another?
Please.
Is that, the other thing this does do, is that there are sections that are owned by the town, but it puts the whole cost, in other words, the town's not even gonna pay for their sections, if it goes a hundred percent.
No, no, it's up to a hundred percent.
Up to a hundred percent, but.
It could be less than a hundred, far less, it could be less than fifty percent. This allows us to do, it could be, it could be ten percent.
But when you're trying to convince people to go on, get enough people, you gotta get fifty-one percent of the. you've got to get fifty-one percent of the footage. It makes it tougher. And it just seems like the town should at least pay for their own part of the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
To the podium, please, and state your name and address, please.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Tom Way. I'm at 2:30 Swan Pond Road. And Phil and Rosalie are my neighbors. And my question is, I, to me, it doesn't really matter fifty percent, a hundred percent, seventy-five percent. We just want to get the, the road paved. You know, it's been, how many administrations of, of DPWs that we've had? Phil and Rosalie lived here for forty years. And we just want a decent road. Right now, it's got potholes, rocks, it's, you know, washboardy. It's, to your point, Mr. Frisco, it's not every time it rains. It's maybe once or twice a year, we get stuff delivered, put down. Really, it just puts more rocks on the road. So, you know, there's, there's car damage, there's dust everywhere. We just need it paved. And I, I really don't know the process. And as far as being residents concerned, yeah, great, you know. Have it be fifty percent, have it be a hundred percent. Doesn't, it doesn't really matter. We just want to get the, get the job done and, and have a, have a decent road. It's a, it's a, the only part of this road, it's about a mile from the cul-de-sac where all the mailboxes are, to the end of the road, about a one mile. Half of it's paved. No one lives on that section at all. It's just, you know, town forest. So you go, and it's been repaved. So it's nice. It's beautiful. It's a nice road. But you get to where all the people live, and it's a mess. So anyway, save my case. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go to Article seventeen. We'll come back to this one.
Article seventeen would appropriate money for special counsel legal expenses. The article would provide additional funding for legal expenses related to the secondary school building project. The article proposes to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash for continued legal action.
Any discussion, any questions?
We've already recommended it.
Yep, you already made the recommendation, yep.
Article eighteen would authorize the board of selectmen to sell town-owned land located at Eight Devens Road via a request for proposals processed rather than by auction to the highest bidder.
Sorry. Any questions on Article eighteen? Any more discussion in the board?
No, we've recommended it.
Okay. We're good.
Article nineteen would authorize the board of selectmen to take steps to remove restrictions on an existing town water easement located at one hundred Lowell Road.
So board members, in case you were, the reason why this was requested, we're having an issue trying to get the easement ish, yeah, the easement updated for the acquisition, associated with the acquisition of one oh four Lowell Road. We received news tonight that we, that has been approved by the mortgage company. So I believe we will, I'm going to make a recommendation to pass over this article. You'd like to wait?
Wait till the evening at town meeting.
Oh, wait, okay.
I'm a fan of a document in hand.
Okay. But hopefully by town meeting, we'll have the document in hand. But we were notified.
Yes.
That it's been signed.
So do we want to change this to a recommendation to be made at town meeting?
I would leave the recommendation as is.
Just a question, would this?
Doesn't matter to me, actually.
Would this authorize the board to take by eminent domain, as I mentioned?
Yes.
It would?
Acquire by any means, per, any lawful means, including by eminent domain. Which the board already has the authority because it, for portable water purposes anyway, but.
Oh, yeah, because generally I've seen the articles would include that.
I don't have my copy of the warrant in front of me.
I believe it says that.
Oh, does it? Okay, sorry.
But that's, they've already approved.
Right, no, they've approved it. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
It's a very good thing.
Yep, it's right in there.
Good, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? So we may revisit our recommendation on, at town meeting.
Hope so.
Any other, that's it on the articles. Any more discussion, any more questions from the public? If I don't hear any, I'd like to close the public hearing on this. Quickly go over the assignments that I'd like to make recommendations for assignments rather than spend a lot of time on it. So Articles one, two, and three, I'd like Mrs. Minupelli to do. Articles four, five, and six, Mr. Messeri. Articles seven, eight, and nine, I would do. Articles ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, I would like Mr. O'Leary to do. And then the remaining Articles fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, Mr. Schultz. So it's nineteen articles, roughly three point eight articles a person. The ones that Mr. O'Leary has are all related to the water, so I thought he'd be the appropriate person with obviously Mr. Messeri to support him. If anybody has any objection, let me know. If not, I'd like to try to move on to the approved board meeting, Selectmen in 2017 and beyond strategic plan. Okay? Did you capture all that, Mike? Do you need me to email it to you? I'd like to just discuss this. We're going to, we're going to bring something up on this strategic plan. I'm going to go through it real quick.
You skipped over the warrant articles, or are we going back to them? I'm, I'm sorry, not the warrant articles, the minutes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to those.
Okay.
Because we don't get to them tonight. We'll just get to them by the next meeting. Not a priority, right? That we have to get those approved tonight? The minutes?
No. What, I just saw it, and it's not showing the presentation. If you give me a moment, I can grab it from my office, Mr. Chairman?
No problem. Go right ahead. While you're grabbing that, I just want to talk to the board members about the suggested change associated with the time clock, okay? Mrs. Rourke in the room. So I know most of you are aware that the way we do time clocks, our management, our time cards today is very outdated. It's a paper process. It's labor-intensive to review them, add them up, and then have supervisors go through it, add them up, go through another layer of administration, go through them and check them. So in the strategic plan, under the technology, I'd like the board to consider a sub-bullet for FY nineteen to appropriate the funding they need to get the Munis module to execute the electronic time card system. Something that we should have probably done a long time ago. But I want us to specifically capture in our strategic plan. So, you know, we may get public to the, to the community that we're going to go to this and I think will help us with some of our CBA discussions as well, that everybody sees that this is the direction we want to go in as a board. That's my recommendation. Purely up to you whether or not you want to integrate that into our strategic plan this evening before we make a final vote on it. Any questions or thoughts or discussion?
Do we have an estimate of what Munis system, that module costs at this point?
So we have the capability currently with the modules that we have within Munis to do time entry, which would replace the paper time sheets that non-union employees use. And as well as some other unions use this, the same time sheet format. However, we would need funds for implementation for that module. So the module exists already. It's just not being utilized. And we would need consulting funds to implement that module.
What about hardware for reading the time cards or whatever, or electronic input?
So.
Is it going to be direct electronic input?
It's direct electronic input. So we would have to evaluate the hardware needs of departments that may not have a workstation per employee. Most of the departments do, you know, potentially maybe the library doesn't. We'd have to evaluate that.
Could DPW bond? What about in that situation?
The DPW already has in their budget for a time clock to replace the current time clock that exists down there. And that time clock would be electronic and it would automatically upload into Munis. So they would not be part of this time entry within Munis. So the module within Munis that this time entry is in is employee self-service, which we implemented maybe three or four years ago for the emailing of direct deposit advices and how employees also change their W fours. So we do already have the module. It would just be for implementation.
So, Michael.
Go right ahead, Mrs. Messeri.
So I, I have a Philly, one of my customers, a Philly large facility. And they take time both from the computer where people have desktop computers. They can enter their time. And then in the, in the warehouse and in several other locations that they have, they actually have an electronic time reader that those employees can put their time in.
Correct. And that would be similar to what we're going to do.
Yeah, I was going to say it.
Do down at DPW. DPW would, you know, punch in, similar to the warehouse that you're speaking of. And then if I was coming in for the day, I would log into my computer and punch in. If I was offsite and I was starting a meeting somewhere, I could do it from my phone. I could do it from an iPad. You, you can do it wherever you have access to employee self-service. And employee self-service sits on its own server. If you go to the town's website, it's actually at the bottom of the page. It's for employees and it, it links you to.
Yeah.
The website, so. It's a secure website.
So, Michael, I have no problem adding that.
As a sub-bullet under technology, if we can maybe pull up that slide. Down here, we have the permitting and retention access. Oh, here to the left, almost down to the bottom. There you go. Adding a sub-bullet in there. If, any, Mr. O'Leary, any objection or concern?
No, I just have a question as far as how it's currently being implemented. Does it give them real time as far as what they have of vacation, you know, earned time vacation, sick leave, personal time, what they have in the books?
So that would be another step. That's a separate, that would be another step in the process of implementation. We would have to add the accrual piece to that. When the town purchased the payroll module of Munis, that was available then. It was not implemented. That was prior to my arrival. So that is something that would have to be implemented as well.
Okay, because, again, before I retire, I went from a paper time sheet that was submitted on a weekly basis and then a separate one for expenses, timepiece expenses, to electronically, we just did it, you know, weekly. And again, you can see real time. You know, when you put in, you know, eight hours vacation, subtracted from your vacation time, you can see it right there.
And that, that would take place.
Right. And then the only, say safeguards that were in place is that, you know, certain managers had responsibility for okaying. In other words, the employee puts it in, but then someone has to okay it. And it wasn't just anybody at payroll or the compterels or anywhere else. It was an immediate supervisor who knew where you were and what you were supposed to be doing.
That would be the same thing here. There would be a workflow that would be set up, whether it would be, you know, the department, the department head or their direct manager. They would have to approve it before it made its way over to payroll every week.
Right. And again, the transition, and again, I lived through the transition. It was a little rocky at first, but it, it didn't take, you know, probably four to six weeks and everybody was acclimated to it. You just get used to doing it, so.
It is not a, it's not a difficult process. It's just getting everybody trained.
It wasn't, it wasn't anything that had to be negotiated from a collective bargaining standpoint either. It was just, you know, it was rolled out, lots of notice, adequate training upfront. This is how you're going to report your time now. And, you know, the accrual is something that we've been working on from a collective bargaining standpoint. But it, it's right there in front of the employee. They know any day of the week, any time of day, what they have for earned time and what's on the books.
Well, the current process is very labor intensive. I got a little overview of it today. And I just thought this would be a perfect opportunity for us to integrate it into our objectives and under technology. And, you know, we've been talking about it forever, too.
So we have it partially implemented now?
So we have, we utilize or underutilize employee self-service. It has the ability to request time off, to enter, to, you know, enter your time sheet. There's, there's a whole slew of things. You can change your benefits through it. So we are not fully utilizing it. And one of the reasons was due to the fact that we never implemented the accruals. We could have implemented the accruals even prior to employee self-service. From what I understand, during the first Munis implementation here was that the contracts, the employment contracts are very cumbersome and you need to have them all entered in order for the accruals to work properly. That will be the biggest challenge. The time sheet replacement, you know, won't take that long to implement. It will be getting the accruals on everybody's paychecks, you know, working properly.
And it still will provide them also the opportunity to go back and look at the previous pay, paychecks and.
That will not go away.
W twos.
Right, that's still, that will still stay. And the time, you know, we would just be having you enter it into the computer versus entering it onto an Excel spreadsheet and printing it out and then bringing it to payroll. So you wouldn't, you know, be using, wasting paper. You would just enter it right into the computer.
Mrs. Minupelli?
Do you write now, do the calculations by hand on accruals for employees?
We have a spreadsheet for every employee.
Which you manually have to input the number.
Yes. So we take, we take the paper time sheet. And if you took one vacation day this week, we charge one vacation day for you and.
That explains why you're here when we're all gone. And you go back to your office at eleven or twelve o'clock night. So this will computerize that and free up a lot of time for people to direct it to other things.
Yes.
And then my second question to you is, right now, I would think or envision it, like when you send us the budget on the payroll to review every week, that you would have the managers signing off electronically like you do with, with us?
Yes, that would be part of the workflow and approval process. So I would enter my time and the town administrator would approve my time for, for that week. And then I would approve my staff's time. You know, Andrew Lafferty would approve, approve his non-union employees' time as well as his clerical union employees' time. And then the time clock from the DPW garage would, you know, flow within Munis as well, so.
And just one more question. Do you have an idea of how much the cost would be to implement this?
I don't anticipate it being large, like I said. For the most part, I understand how everything needs to operate. But I am only one person, so we would need to have some outside help, whether it's from Munis or from, you know, an outside consultant. So I, I would assume, you know, I would say twenty-five thousand dollars.
So we go through the budget this year for the next year. Hopefully, we'll have that information as you get your presentations.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Are you staying for this? Is there anything else we need to do?
I'm staying for executive session.
Okay. We're going to try to go through this very quickly, so we don't keep you here all the same. I want to, again, thank the board for meeting and having an extra meeting to update our strategic plan. We do it annually. And I thought it was a very good meeting. I think we got a lot done. So you can go right to the objectives if you, I'd like to, I'm sorry, go back to the program and progress assessment. I'd like to start there if we could. Next slide. So we've added a few things. We started out with last year trying to, try to find a way to find uses for the reuse for the J.T. Berry properties. I think we've done a great job on that so far. We still have one parcel remaining that we have to go back out for an RFP on. But as you can see here, we've updated the progress assessment to show our progress with the potential sale to multi-homes for the thirty acres, roughly thirty acres. Right now, we're on pace to do our closing. We're going to try to meet next week or the week after to try to come up with a final schedule on that closing. We're hoping to do it by the end of November. We're doing our final closing on that property. That's our ultimate goal. That's our ultimate goal. That would stay within the timeline that we have under the seal partnership model to get the additional five percent, selling the property for a total of ten percent extra in the split. The other addition that we see here from the past years is the establishment of the partially self-funded health insurance module. That's the participating, is that the participating funding area?
Yes.
Okay. And, let's see, the last one is to secure the funding for the MWRE Water Resource, which we've accomplished, and now we go to our objective slide. You can see the change here, just as the recent news, we're gonna try as an objective now to secure funding for Andover Portable Water Solution, and then one of the first steps is this October town meeting, to start that step. And as Mr. O'Leary highlighted earlier this evening, it's a parallel path until we get to October, I mean, until we get to April. So we have a lot of work to continue on that, and I want to thank Mr. Messeri and Mr. O'Leary again for all the time and effort they put into this. The slight change to complete the FEIR, we've moved that out now to two thousand and eighteen, where I believe it was two thousand and seventeen last time we presented this. Again, I'm just touching upon the changes from our meeting. Develop a plan for the reuse of the sale, of the sale proceeds for the JT Berry property. Once we complete the sale with Polty Homes, that is something we as a Board have to work on in two thousand and eighteen. And then determine the vision for the town's future identity. It's something we spent a little bit of time on, and that's, we will follow up in future Board meetings as we discuss that. We did change, you see the animal control officer associated with teaming with surrounding towns. We did explore that, the town administrator and his staff spent an enormous amount of time vetting that option, didn't quite work out, but we're not gonna give up on always exploring opportunities for sharing resources with our surrounding neighbors, and potentially the veteran services is still on the table and being discussed. We have a Warren Article associated with our feasibility, where as we improve town buildings, we want to focus heavily on our town hall, potential replacement in our fire station relocation and replacement, and part of that feasibility study, so it's on our objectives. And we have the town meeting warrants that coincide with that. Affordable housing, plan development ongoing, and it's something we're gonna spend more time with as we go along. And transportation, we've now got the MVRTA, and we're hopefully gonna be rolling that out here soon, and we're gonna continue to explore other options for improved enhancements of other transportation, something the Board's fully committed on doing. And I think that's it, unless the Board wanted to go through any of the strengths or anything, but I just wanted to really just touch upon that and then maybe take a vote this evening to approve this plan. We'll have the town administrator go up, make the final administrative changes to this, and then get it posted on our website, and our opportunity to brief the department heads as they start to prepare their FY nineteen budgets.
Mr. Chairman, just a note for the record, the agenda-
And the motions state, so, board of selectmen two thousand and seventeen and beyond Strategic Plan, it is in fact the two thousand and eighteen and beyond Strategic Plan. Please forgive us for the error in the phrasing and the language.
Agenda typo.
Scriptures.
So you waiting, you ready for a motion?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Board of Selectmen two thousand and eighteen and beyond Strategic Plan.
Do you need a minute more? We're good. So we have a motion to approve the two thousand and eighteen and beyond Strategic Plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Messeri. Any more discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you for the meal.
Oh, my pleasure. I hope you enjoyed it.
I did.
I do apologize for the cookies.
I mean, you know, I'd probably go to more meetings if I were fed.
We can make that happen. But again, thank you for being committed to this. I think having a Strategic Plan is very good. As the Board makes change, we have a new member, and I think it's helpful for him, in his first year to really have an idea of where we're going, and keeps us on a path going forward. So I'm really bought in on this, and I appreciate your commitment to it. So I have the motion, I have a second, no more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous, one absent. Thank you. Okay. Brings us to the town administrator's report.
We have the, gonna skip over the Minutes?
We're gonna do the Minutes, we'll do those another day. We're gonna take, because I don't want to keep Mrs. Rourke here all evening, and it's not a priority item. I want to get back to executive session if we could, so allow the town administrator to go through his reports, we'll do a quick old and new business, and we'll enter back into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hydrant flushing is scheduled to begin this week and is expected to continue until late October. As I've noted previously, I encourage the public to visit the town website for more information. A town employee appreciation luncheon is scheduled for Friday, October thirteenth, from twelve o'clock noon to one-thirty PM at Hillview Country Club. On this day, town hall will close for the day at twelve o'clock noon. The public library will close from twelve noon until one-thirty. Please see the attached invitation, and the Board members are encouraged to attend if available that day. As I've mentioned previously, planning efforts are underway for the procurement of solid waste collection and disposal contracts. We expect to brief and request feedback from the Board on the collection methods on October sixteenth. In the interim, DPW has participated in a collaborative procurement for disposal locations, and based on that procurement, recommends Covanta continue to be our disposal location. I intend to sign an extension with Covanta for solid waste disposal by September twenty-first. There's a detailed report from the Public Works Cook Director that I included with my report. After a recent employee resignation from the town's Federal Youth Substance Abuse Grant Program, the police chief, human resources director, and I intend to modify the administration of the grant program to better meet the town's needs. A new structure is attached along with the current structure, and we do believe that we have a qualified internal candidate familiar with the grant program to take on the responsibilities of grant program oversight under the reorganized structure. In accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement with the DPW Union, we are procuring new uniforms for DPW staff this month. Human Resources is also running a trial polo shirt, polo tee-shirt program with DPW Buildings and Grounds, Information Technology, and the Human Resources Department, which has been met with positive feedback. And finally, we welcome the Massachusetts Registry of Motor Vehicles to the AAA Member Services Center at RK Plaza. AAA and the RMV hosted a ribbon cutting on September fourteenth. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Prisco just had to step up for a minute, but does anybody have any questions of the TA? So moving on to personal privilege. Mr. O'Leary?
Well, the new business, I just want to mention the passing of former employee Ginny Fitzmeier, or Virginia Fitzmeier, more affectionately known as Ginny, who worked in the DPW Department for about twenty years, longtime resident of the community, good friend and neighbor to all the people up on Anthony and Peter Road, and a wonderful room mother in my fourth grade class, and terrific lady, always a smile, that's a terrific asset to the community when she worked for us, and mourned her loss, and we'll miss her. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Messeri?
Just an update on Cable Advisory Committee and their discussions and negotiations with Comcast, and, you know, from the Board's side, there's a significant issue associated with the Comcast saying that they're gonna terminate our use of IT, or data transfer over the INET. So, the beat goes on. Comcast has admitted that they would probably extend it for a year to give us an opportunity to make the changes that would be necessary. Input from council suggests that it's within their rights, so it's not something that we're gonna, a battle that we're gonna win, although we'll continue to fight. I have a meeting scheduled with IT here on Wednesday to talk about and come up with specific approaches, options to continue to have connectivity between our buildings, which is critical for all the users of data transfer between the buildings, and that would include the time clocks. And the objective there is to come up with the options and come up with the costs associated with that, and then see what we can do in the negotiations with Comcast to help absorb some of that cost if at all possible, so.
What's the drug dead date? Do we have to have this?
Maybe Michael can answer that.
I know you said a year, but a year from-
I think it's January, the new contract goes into place January first.
That's correct.
My understanding.
The local franchise agreement that we have-
This coming June?
This coming June.
So every year from then.
Under the scenario being proposed, yes.
Which they haven't put in writing, but it was hinted. And then Verizon comes on board, their contract renews in six months later, probably July first.
So there is a, there's a small chance that that could actually get shut off in
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I think they'll work with us.
They'll work with us.
It won't get alarmed.
You know, we've made the point, we've made the point, we're in-
We should be alarmed, or we should be upset.
We're on a fiscal year, you know, and-
Do we need to ask them to come here? So this, no?
At some point, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you on that. Anything else? Oh, Mr. O'Leary, one more.
No, I had, I had one more thing that I, I said I was done, but I'm not. Just as far as the athletics facility subcommittee and the new facilities, bathroom facilities at Arthur County Field, things are moving along. We've had some good meetings with the contractors and the individuals that are gonna be providing the structure, they're gonna be setting up the fencing this week, and they anticipate getting underway, I think, starting the twenty-fifth or something around there, as far as doing the site work. They should have all the infrastructure in as far as the foundation and infrastructure by the end of October, and the new facility that's gonna be delivered, hopefully by the end of January, but everything will be in by March, in March. So things are looking good.
Great, and all the teams and leagues and everything been notified about temporary concessions?
Everybody's been notified, logistics have been worked out.
Beautiful.
Marty Tilton's done a good job of facilitating all of that, and everybody's done a good job, meeting regularly, we're gonna have regular meetings, update during the construction phase, so if anything comes up, we'll know on a very timely basis, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Messeri, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Thank you, Kate, for taking over for me, I had to run off for a sec. Go ahead.
Happy birthday to my brilliant daughter Kay, my brilliant and beautiful daughter Kay.
Happy birthday.
I hope you have an amazing year.
I know she's up watching, right?
I hope so. She has her friends call me about town questions for their homework, so. I know the school curriculum involves, you know, civic, civic questions and things, and which leads me to thank you for the dinner, the Strategic Planning, and just remind everybody out there, there's a form on the back page of this Warren. Come and join us as volunteers to help out the town, participate civic, and just tell us what you want to do, and there's plenty of availability for volunteers.
Thank you. I don't have anything this evening, so if we're good, I'd like to take a motion to enter back into executive session, including the finance director.
Sure. And, Mr. Chairman, I move to enter back into executive session for the purposes of exemption three, collective bargaining strategy litigation, and exemption six, real estate, such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town, and to admit finance director and town administrator, and we will-
Enter into open, open sessions for adjournment.
Okay, all right, so we will return to open session for purposes of adjournment.
Second.
Second by Mr. Messeri. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Messeri?
Aye.
Mrs. Minupelli? And then Chair's aye. Thank you.[1789.47][1789.47][music]